Okay, now that it's a little bit after six o'clock, we're going to begin this public hearing. This public hearing is for Centro's proposed service changes for its commuter service connecting Auburn and the city of Syracuse. This public hearing is beginning at 6:03, scheduled for 6:00 PM. The agenda for tonight, we're going to go through a quick presentation of the service changes. If anytime you'd like to submit comments during the presentation, please use the question feature that's in the meeting control panel to the right-hand side of your screen. We ask that you limit the questions to the proposed service changes only. Responses to our questions will be addressed at the conclusion of the presentation as appropriate. I would ask everybody who is not speaking, please mute your microphone, please, until the end of the presentation. At this point, I would like to introduce the Centro individuals who are here listening to the public comment. That would include our Centro Chief Executive Officer Brian Schultz, Centro's Deputy Chief Executive Officer Christopher Tough, Centro Board Members Darlene Latimore, representing Kiowa County, and Centro Board Member Tina Fitzgerald, representing Onadoga County. My name is Steve Cagle, I'm the Vice President of Communications and Business Planning here at Centro. So the service change is essentially what we looked at, we looked at the commuter services that connected Syracuse and Auburn and looked at ridership levels combined with COVID pandemic elements and determined that we were trying to consolidate some routes and discontinue some others that are underutilized in a more efficient way of providing services to connect Auburn and Syracuse. Among them were to consolidate the Welch Allen Tessie Plastics Service with our Auburn to Syracuse service, the 138. We're also looking to enhance and modify the existing variations of the Auburn to Syracuse service. We were going to discontinue the Auburn to Syracuse via Wheatport, Jordan, and Elbridge Route and discontinue the service that connects Auburn with the Moravia and Kiowa Correctional Facility. We're going to go through these, each of these routes changes one by one. We'll be getting with the Welch Allen Tessie Plastics Service. This service was weekday commuter bus route and it connected downtown Auburn to Tessie Plastics in Elbridge and Welch Allen in Mockville. We provided two trips to these facilities for first and second shift workers. In addition, we have three return trips, provide transportation for first, second, and third shift workers. On average, there were approximately 13 riders who used this on a daily basis. These numbers, all the numbers I'm going to cite tonight are from the calendar year 2019, these are pre-pandemic numbers. The bulk of the ridership that used this service was traveling to and from the Welch Allen plant. Tessie Plastics ridership was very low, it averaged less than one person per trip. CNY Centro staff met with individuals from Tessie Plastics and Welch Allen during 2019 and 2020 to assess where they were and what their transportation needs were for the future. Tessie Plastics, when that service began back in the mid 2000s, we were providing about 20 to 30 rides per day. That number had dwindled down to about, to less than two per day as of 2019. In having conversations with their human resources department, they indicated that they had changed the recruitment approach, no longer felt that public transportation was a high priority for the candidates that they were seeking to employ. Welch Allen, conversations with Welch Allen, ridership has maintained, been very steady over the years. It maintained between 12 and 24 users per day in 2019 and during the pandemic. Now Welch Allen leadership indicated to us that they needed workers during the pandemic. They relied on the bus service and they were looking to expand their operations in the post-pandemic world. And they were looking to expand employment options for individuals who live in Syracuse and in Auburn. The existing service prior had only provided service that was really usable for individuals who lived in the city of Auburn. So what we are looking to do is consolidate the Welch Allen and Tessie Plastic route with, which will be the new 138 Auburn Syracuse route. It will leave Auburn, it will travel to Skiny Islands as it always had, but it will travel up 321 and take old Seneca Turnpike through to Marcellus. And then it would continue through to the Taunton area, Hallett Hill to Taunton and to the city of Syracuse. In this way, we would be able to provide similar service to Welch Allen for those dozen or two riders who are still using the service on a regular basis. This would preserve the Welch Allen service access to Welch Allen from both Auburn and Syracuse. It would discontinue the service to Tessie Plastics, which is being highly underutilized. And we'd be able to reallocate those resources that had been dedicated to the Auburn Route 7 bus route to providing additional service on the Syracuse Auburn 138 bus route. Looking at the existing Auburn to Syracuse bus service that was the 236 and 138, there were two different services that ran during weekdays. The 236 route was an intercity service that connected the city of Auburn, went to downtown Syracuse and traveled through Skiny Islands and Marcellus and through Fairmount. Now there were four trips that operated from Auburn and six trips that operated from Syracuse each weekday. There was three in each direction on both Saturdays and Sundays, and we'll talk about the weekend in a little bit. The 138 route is a weekday commuter service which connects downtown Auburn to the city of Syracuse. But that extended, it went directly just to the Syracuse University area and did not travel to the Centro Transit Hub. It also traveled through Skiny Islands, Marcellus, and Taunton. Now there were six trips that operated from Auburn and four that operated from Syracuse each weekday. And this is what the service looked like, beginning in Auburn. The old services, the dotted line that traveled this way through to Marcellus, the new service goes up 321 and to old Seneca Turnpike, traveling through to Taunton and then Syracuse. The old service went down Casson Road here and also to West Genesee Street. The portion of the route from West Genesee Street, from Camillo's Commons to downtown Syracuse is going to be performed from buses that originate in the city of Syracuse. So the level of service along Genesee Street has not changed, however, obviously it's harder to get to that. There's not a direct route during the weekday from Auburn, you would have to go to Syracuse and transfer to the Syracuse 36 route that brings you back out this way. The majority of the people riding the service were trying to get to Syracuse, downtown Syracuse for employment purposes. That's why we made the change to this particular route, to keep it consistent. The 138 service, which had continued up to Syracuse University, we made the similar change from Auburn and made the change for Skiny Islands and Marcellus again to provide service to Welch Allen. And we are discontinuing the service, or not discontinuing, we are ending the service at the Syracuse Transit Hub where people can make connections that are quick and easy to the university area as well. So we're homogenizing those two into one bus route that runs weekdays, that runs a little quicker, is more direct, more efficient for users and for the bus, for us to provide the service. So again, we're trying to maintain consistent routing for the intercity service between the city of Auburn and the city of Syracuse. We want to maintain our service to Welch Allen through the day. The original 138 bus route did bypass the Transit Hub. This new service will allow people to not only get to Syracuse University, but if they work or have to get to other parts of the Centro system within the city of Syracuse, we're now going to take them to the hub where they can make, they can make connections. Again, it's more, a more direct route in a shorter ride from Auburn to Syracuse, we think that's a little more attractive for users. There is a slight change in the call bus coverage area in Marcellus. This area here, because we are now going up 321 and also through old Seneca Turnpike, it does change the call bus coverage area. There were no call bus users in this section of, the old section of this service. And since we've been providing the service since the pandemic, resumed service after the pandemic, we have picked up two additional call bus riders. So it's actually been a better service for call bus users in that part of the county. And we are reallocating resources again from the Auburn 7 and Route 236 route. This way, we can increase the number of trips between Auburn and Syracuse. We're extending the day, we've added a late night trip that leaves Syracuse at about 10:25 for individuals who work in Syracuse and need to get back to the Auburn area later at night. That came, that was specifically from customer requests for later service coming to and from Syracuse. On the weekend, the previous routing would again go through the old, your old routing connecting Skiny Islands and Marcellus. We've changed that again to go up 321 and old Seneca Turnpike to be consistent. Although this, when we get to the Hallett Hill, Casson Road area, the weekend service will go down Casson Road, will connect to Camillo's Commons and will terminate at Township 5. This allows us to have individuals, direct access to Township 5 for shopping entertainment needs on the weekend and also Camillo's Commons. Customers can make, they can make transfers at Township 5 or at Camillo's Commons on our Route 36 Syracuse route or the Syracuse 74 route. It will not continue to down Genesee Street to the Syracuse Transit Hub. People who need to get there can make connections at Camillo's Commons or at Township 5. That's essentially what this slide kind of discusses. It's just the, the new routing serves Camillo's Commons and Township 5. It matches the new Auburn 138 routing that we are operating during the week and transfers are available at Township 5, Camillo's Commons on the 74 and 36 routes. So, so essence, when you put it all together, we're looking to modify the Auburn, existing Auburn 138 route to provide service to Welch Allen, reroute the weekday 236 Auburn Syracuse trips to follow the new routing that is consistent and take the 236 service that previously had gone to downtown Syracuse and change that routing to provide service to Camillo's Commons and Township 5. The Route 38 Auburn service that went through Elbridge that we are looking to discontinue, this was a commuter service that operated between the city of Auburn and city of Syracuse. There were two trips operated daily, one from Syracuse and one from Auburn each day. Ridership was very low, it was five to six people per day that were using the service. So we're looking to, you know, take those resources that are not on this bus route that's underutilized and it helps us increase the service level on the Auburn to Syracuse 138 service. It provides, you know, the new service again is more direct service and it's more frequent. Of the five to six customers that use this route, I personally rode it and observed a couple of them were traveling from Auburn to Syracuse anyway, they just preferred this particular routing. I think is the timing of it was a little different, but we've matched times with this route, this particular trip. So those individuals will still have service. We understand though that there are, there are a couple of people in the Wheatport, Jordan area who, who use that service pre-pandemic and that service is not going to be available if these proposed changes go forward at this point. The Moravia Route, Route 8 service, this is a commuter service that connects the city of Auburn and the Kiowa Correctional Facility in Moravia. There were two trips that operated, one in the morning going from Auburn to Moravia and back and another one that did the same in the afternoon. Again, approximately five to six individuals used the service. Annual ridership counts indicate that probably only three of them rode daily on an average. Again, direct observation showed that many individuals were driving their vehicles to a local convenience store and using that as parking right location. We only bring that up because those individuals do have access to vehicles, they are not transit dependent. And at this point, we're looking to discontinue this service again, as it was only carrying on average three riders a day and there were many days where nobody rode the service at all. That concludes the presentation part of this public hearing. This, this presentation is available on our website at www centro.org backslash public meeting. We will continue to welcome questions and comments on our social media platforms, on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram at GoCentroBus. People can call and leave a message for us via phone at 315-442-3400. You can speak to one of our customer service representatives, they'll take down your information and your comments. You can write to us at 200 Cortland Avenue, Syracuse, New York, 13205. And we still are accepting faxed comments as well at 315-442-3337. At this point, I will open up the floor to any attendees who wish to offer up any comments. I'm looking at one individual, Verita Batista. I don't know if you're willing to or want to make a comment, but you are more than welcome to do so. You do not have to. And that appears to be the lone member of the public that is in attendance at this public hearing. So at this point, it is now 6:20, we will keep this public hearing open for another 15 minutes to 6:35. If there are no other members of the public who will, who are, will join and attend or offer up any comments, we will close the public hearing at that moment. But I want to give an extra 15 minutes for any other individuals who may want to join the public hearing. But I want to give an extra 15 minutes for any other individuals who may want to join the public hearing. Okay, as of this point, there are no members of the public who have joined the meeting, who are looking to offer comment. It is now 6:35. And at this point, we are going to officially close the public hearing. I thank everyone for participating and thank you very much. That concludes the
Thank you, everyone. Thanks, everyone.
Bye.
Bye-bye.